Good evening, it's May 11th. The meeting, May 11th, 2023, meeting of the Haberford Township Planning Commission is now called to order. Marge Buchanan, could you please read the, I mean, call the attendants?
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Ms. Dobbs. Mr. Capuzzi.
Present.
Mr. Fior Di Mondo. Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Mr. Montresso.
Present.
Ms. Phillips.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening, hello. My name is Chris Yawn, I'm the Civil Engineer for this project. The owner and owner's attorney are here tonight. As you mentioned, this is a continuation. We were here last month to present this plan. Since then, we resubmitted the plans to address the Township Engineer's Review Letter and some comments made by the Planning Commission while we were here. So if I could, I'll just note a few of those changes that we made. The first was, we revised the plans to include a waiver request for, and call this a partial waiver, to not provide the minimum cartway width of 27 feet and right-of-way of 50 feet. We did follow this up with some correspondence with the township to call this a waiver if necessary or if required. We think there's language in the code that would permit the board to require this if they want to, but it's not a necessity. Regardless, the waiver request is on the work plan. The next is, we, there was a lot of discussion about an alternative plan that only showed, that showed the existing home to remain and a new house. And so we did include that as the eighth page in this plan set, and I will, I'll show that after I go through these, if that's okay.
Please, please.
The next is, there were questions about the downspouts, and so we did revise some, some notes and line types on the plan to show where we would have gutters and downspouts hung on the side of the building and what would be underground. We did not have time to show all of the details that were requested. Need to work with the architect a little bit with that, and so I can do that. It's a will comply, it's not something I can't do, I just didn't have enough time to address. And then the last was a question about steep slopes, and so we did show on the plan, let's show this sheet three, there is a section that's on, on this sheet which shown as parcel B, it's right below the B. And so those areas are greater than the 25%, but because they don't span multiple two, two-foot contours, because these are one-foot contours shown in the plan, they aren't regulated slopes. And so we are including them as the steep slopes, but not the very steep slopes. So we just showed a different hatching for those. And then, we did receive a new review letter from the Township Engineer. He, he prepared this plan for any items that we have already addressed, he noted those as addressed, so if it's okay, I'll just read through a few that we didn't totally comply with yet. And so the first is number three, retaining walls within the front yard.
Excuse me, these are ones you said you did not totally comply with yet?
Correct, we, we need to provide some additional information, although all of these are will comply items. Number three, retaining walls within the front yard shall not exceed 30 inches in height, says the detail should be revised to indicate a 30-inch maximum height. So we did revise the grading on the plan to show it wouldn't be more than 30 inches, but our standard detail, we didn't show to be maximum 30 inches, so we will fix that. On the second page, item number nine, in approved planning, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewerage Facilities Planning Module, exemption is required. And so, we did prepare that, we submitted it with the original subdivision application. The first step is to go to Upper Darby Township, and so we did submit to them, we followed up with them several times, we're still waiting on their response. And so once we get the response from Upper Darby, we will then get sign-off from the township and then go to DEP for approval. So that's a will comply, but it's in progress. Number 10, monuments are required to be provided on the right-of-way lines, at corners, and at angle points. A monument should be provided at the rear shared corner of lots two and three. And so we did add these along the, the right-of-way in the front, but we, we didn't have one in the back, so that's, that's one that we will add. Number 13, infiltration testing is required to be conducted at the elevation of the proposed infiltration surface. Additional testing should be conducted for the proposed infiltration facilities on each lot. It would be prudent to conduct additional infiltration testing prior to construction to determine if the basin elevations can be adjusted to accommodate a revised roof drain configuration. And so, we did revise the plans to indicate that additional testing would be required during construction to confirm these systems would work. And so the Township Engineer is asking that we do that testing sooner, and so that is something that, that we can do. Number 15, additional information should be provided regarding installation and maintenance of the proposed above-grade rainwater conductors. It may be prudent to lower the elevation of the infiltration beds to allow for underground installation of rainwater conductors. And the new note says, please provide additional information on anchorage of the gutter downspout and how the gutter downspout will be maintained, given proximity in areas to existing grade and the number of bends indicated. Also, based on the current design for Lot 2, it does not appear that the roof drain from the east portion of the house can be accommodated through the boulder wall. And so, that's an item that we will provide additional information on. Number 16, a PennDOT highway occupancy permit will be required for the proposed driveway and utility installations. We acknowledge that, it's a note on the plan, that's something we typically submit once we get through preliminary plans at the township, just because if anyone has dealt with PICO, or, I'm sorry, PennDOT, they're difficult, and so it's best to have your final design plan and go in once with them and not make any changes along the way. So we like to get through, through the plans with the township first. Number 17, the plan should indicate whether the existing sanitary sewer lateral is being utilized for Lot 1 or a new lateral is being, connection is proposed. New comment says, a new lateral is proposed for Lot 1, a detail should be provided for the abandonment of the existing lateral such that it does not permit groundwater to enter. And so we will add that detail to the plan. Number 18, please clarify the proposed cantilever decks are supplemental with any ground anchorage. And the new note says applicant has confirmed no ground anchorage will be required. Skipping over to number 23, if approved, a grading drainage soil and erosion sediment control permit will be required for each lot. We did submit those applications with the subdivision application as required by the township, but they won't be issued until after a plan is recorded. And, and lastly, number 24, BMP maintenance agreement shall be executed and contribution of $2,200 per lot to the Township Stormwater Control and BMP Operation Maintenance Fund shall be made. That's also will comply and a note on the plan, but that also doesn't happen until typically along with the grading permit. And so those are the comments from the Township Engineer. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has, or if you'd like me to.
Do any of my colleagues on the commission have any comments or questions?
I'll start with one quick thing. I was at the Historic Commission as the liaison, and I brought this up just, first of all, because you're tearing down an older house, and second of all, because of its proximity to the Nitrate Hall. And they did clarify that any, if your property is within 100 feet of the land of the historic property, that you do need to go before them. So I don't know, is that correct, Kelly? Does that sound?
It said, the ordinance says, within 100 feet of the historic resource. So unless the resource itself is within 100 feet, which I don't believe it is.
I'm not sure.
Because that, I mean, that's a huge, huge property.
Yeah.
That's after property back there, so. Can you guys just confirm that you're not within 100 feet of the Powder Mill, right?
We can verify that.
It's the Nitrate Hall and Powder Mill.
All right. Julia?
Yes.
I'm sorry? I, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it was the Powder Mill, Road Historic Property. Yeah, that's what I thought too, but they were saying like, they were saying like edge of property to edge of land property, not like a historic monument was on the property, so that's what I wasn't sure of.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Angelo?
Want to ask again, or mention again, I think you gotta do as much as you can to get those gutters off the side of the house. And you realize that when you go around the chimney, you're gonna have to come in, go out, back in, it'll look kind of funky. It's your choice.
Was there any discussion at the last presentation, and forgive me, I wasn't there, about the tree that you're planting on the property line?
Not that I recall, but we did go to the Shade Tree Commission in February, I believe.
Does that pose a long-term challenge for the owners of those properties debating who's responsible for the tree?
I know that I have that at my house, and it hasn't been a problem for us, and we did take one down, but I, I could shift it over a foot so that, that, that isn't a problem.
It just so happens, I had to research Pennsylvania tree law recently, and in fact, it's recommended as a rule of thumb to be at least three or four feet back from, from the line. Some people who are strident say as much as 20, but three or four or so sounds pretty good to me.
So, I believe it's.
I'm sorry, Chris, did you say you did or did not go to the Shade Tree Commission yet?
We did go to the Shade Tree Commission. Believe the chart is on.
Page four.
This page.
Four.
Page four. Oh, here it is. It's right above the title block, the proposed, the, the legend that says with the ARs, it is a red maple. There's the, the chart with that label.
I do see a note that says, proposed Shade Tree typically will be species and location to be approved by Township Arboretum. So I don't know if that's in conflict with the fact that they're also already labeled with species and locations.
I can remove that note.
I don't, I don't think we have a Township Arboretum.
I would imagine the Shade Tree Commission would serve that role.
We're, we're looking into it. Did you confirm that the, the cantilever deck would not require any additional disturbance, any additional post or disturbance of the slopes?
For, for now, that's what we have, yes. And so if we need to cut the deck back to, I mean, we're not in, right now, we're not proposing any disturbance to those slopes, so if we need to cut it back to make that happen, we will.
It looks like the deck is protruding about 10 feet from the back of the, of Lot 2. And just making a statement in that, if no ground anchorage will be required, that would mean that it has to be braced up against the existing rear wall in addition to having a cantilever. Bring it up.
Thanks.
Did you want to speak to the alternative proposal now?
Yes. So, this is the last sheet of that plan set. And so it shows the existing house to remain, it shows the, the new house, and the vacant lot. And so we do have a list of variances, and so we do show a, a stormwater system in the rear. And we show a list of variances over on the right-hand side of this plan.
Is this print for the alternative proposal?
Yes, it's the last sheet in that plan set. And so this, this was the plan we had submitted to the zoning hearing board last year. And so if you'd like, I can run down those variances. The first one is a variance to allow a lot area of less than the allowable, and so what's required is 6,000 square feet, and what's proposed here is 5,953. And so, basically what we did, there was a question last time about why we showed the parcels A, B, and C. And so, they were really from the deed, and, and what we did is, this new lot, we're basically showing right along the parcel line as it was, from the subdivision back in the early 1900s. And so it's just a hair under the required 6,000, but we think that makes sense with where it was before. There's actually an iron pin still there in the rear of the lot, very close to where that, that line was. The next is a variance to allow the existing front porch to encroach on the front yard setback. And actually, I'm gonna skip down, that's the second one, three, four, five, to the fifth variance down, says a variance to allow the existing building and. All right, yeah, a variance to allow the existing building and garage to maintain their existing non-conformities. And so there's, that's section of the code that 182-713B is the one that says, if you subdivide, there can't be, an existing building can't have any non-conformities. And so while normally, if you had this lot and you weren't subdividing, you'd be able to keep the garage where it is, you'd be able to keep the front porch, you'd be able to keep the overhangs as they were, they'd be called an existing non-conformity, and you could build other places on the lot. Because we're subdividing, that is really the, the, the main variance we're asking for, and then the, all these others kind of fall under that. So going back to the second one, says variance to allow the existing porch to encroach on the front yard setback. You can see it's, it's well within the front yard setback, it's about 12 or 13 feet in there. The third variance says a variance to allow the existing overhang and bay window to encroach on the side yard setback. And so this is on the right-hand side of the house. Overhangs, I believe, 18 inches or less are allowed to overhang. The setback, in this case, the overhangs are about three feet, and so that's why that would be a non-conformity. The next is a variance to allow the existing garage to encroach on the accessory setbacks, and so if you were building a detached garage now, it would supposed to be either meeting the principal setbacks or 10 feet behind the principal building, so it doesn't do that. And then, the last variance is variance to permit the Lot 2 building and associated features in the steep slopes. And so, for this plan, because this house is much narrower than the other shown on the current plan, we're showing this house projecting back into those slopes. As you can see, there's a little bit of regrading on, on each side of the house, just to push water away from the building, but once you get to the back of the house, we're keeping the slopes as they are. So essentially, we're eliminating the steep slopes without making them steeper or pushing them somewhere else.
When was the existing house built?
When was it built? I'd say 1920? Around 1920, if I remember right.
So what if now, non-conformities have existed for approximately 100 years?
Correct. I guess I'll, I'll say with, although, back then, they weren't non-conformities.
What are existing now, non-conformities?
Right. The one exception to that, I would say, is the bay window and the overhang on the right-hand side. That is happening because of the, the property line, although that property line is also where it was on the original subdivision plan. So to your point, it, it was how it was 100 years ago, when there was a property line there.
Are there any questions or comments on the alternative plan from my colleagues?
Yes, I have a question. So in regards to the steep slope disturbance, there's, so clarify for me, there's no steep slope disturbance on the two lot, the two new home option, but steep slope disturbance on the retaining, the existing house option?
So, there are no buildings or structures shown on this, in the steep slopes on the current plan, the, the new two homes. Putting the structure there would, would require variance. You are permitted 15% disturbance of the slopes to build them. So there is some disturbance on the plan, but not a structure in there that would require variance. So this plan has both, where it has a structure in the slopes and the, and some disturbance.
And then, in terms of maximum allowable impervious coverage in the, so we'll call, I guess, the current plan and then the alternate plan, so the current plan being the two new homes, what's the maximum allowable impervious coverage for a post-construction improvement? So, post-market improvement, so future homeowners, what do they have the option to do versus in the alternate plan? And I'm asking only because if people are gonna add additional impervious cover on the lot, they would probably do so in the rear yard where we have the steep slopes. So I'm just trying to get a handle on what the potential disturbance to steep slopes might be in either scenario.
So if I understand the question right, the maximum impervious is the same on the new plan and on this plan, and we're not asking for additional impervious either way. So, in this plan, we're asking for some of that impervious in the slopes already, on the subdivision plan with the two new homes, if someone to come back, if someone wanted additional impervious there, they would have to come back for a variance. Does that answer the question?
They need a variance for either concept. So pretty much, they have allowable, they have allowable impervious cover, but they couldn't use it in areas of steep slope, once they buy the house.
Only if they got a variance.
Only, right, but nothing by right? Okay.
They, they have 440 square foot left over.
Sure. Is that for, but that's in the, that's in the alternate concept?
Right.
And then how much leftover do they have in the first plan? Because the total coverage limits are different.
So, on this plan, the Lot 1 impervious coverage is about 34%, and so they're permitted 45, so they could add 11%. On the Lot 2, which is the new house, they're at 37.6, and they could go to 45, which is where Mr. Capuzzi said they have about 440 left is, is all they could build. So if I go back to the proposed plan.
Lot, Lot 1 would have about 1,200, 1,300 square feet.
Yes.
And Lot 2 would have about 1,500 square feet, 1,600.
Yes.
Okay.
But again, they still run into that steep slope.
The steep slope issue, right, okay.
Either way, they'd be a variance required.
If they want to build a steep slope.
If they build in the steep slopes. But these, either proposal would include a deck built as part of the land development process.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other comment?
It would look like you can get rid of two of your variance requests without too much trouble. I mean, you can, as far as the lot area, you're short, how many square feet? 50 or something?
Yeah, we talked about angling, once you get past the building, angling it over. We actually discussed that with Township staff.
And if you put a breezeway between the garage and the existing house, that would eliminate the, that variance.
So then, that would make the garage and the house all the principal structure, and then we'd have a different variance for the overhang on the garage. So it would eliminate one, but it would add a new one. We did talk about those things, we had an alternative zoning hearing board plan that would reduce those variances, but essentially, the reduction in variances would just change the roof lines and other things of the existing home, which seemed counterproductive.
What was the staff recommendation for the angling of the lot to get the lot area that you need?
The discussion was to just go with the straight line that matches the pin in the back in the old subdivision plans and keep it with that. It was what we'd called de minimis variance.
Yeah. I was gonna say, it doesn't seem worth it to me to create a weird lot line for such a nominal variance request.
Agreed.
Well, if I can pose an opinion, I feel like the disturbance to the steep slopes is a, is a valid compromise if it means that we can keep the existing home. So I think the value of the existing home is worth the minor disturbance to the steep slopes for the construction of a second house. And that way, we keep as much integrity of the housing stock as we can, while adding a valuable infill property to the neighborhood. And I also like the idea that this porch appears to be at least 50% of the frontage of the house, whereas the porches on the other two options are, they're just like stoop porches, which doesn't seem to match the community character, which seems to match the community character less, so I don't know what the, and do we have architectural renderings for this one either? Or no? Okay. But it seems like if the porch is gonna be a wider component of the facade in the alternate plan, that that would be a better match, at least on paper, to the, to the existing housing stock.
Do you have any pictures tonight? Photos?
I don't. I, well, I mean, I have some.
Of the, of the existing?
For the existing, I do have some that I had printed up, did you? I didn't plan to present them, but I brought them with my.
So, are you requesting a particular action by the board, by the commission on the alternative plan?
Might be a better question for the applicants representative. I mean, we're here for a recommendation on the subdivision plans. However, we understand where we are with both the Planning Commission and, and the neighborhood. And so, I think that if we were to go back to the zoning hearing board, we would very much appreciate a recommendation from the Planning Commission that they prefer that plan. The reason that we pulled it is because we had some neighbors who were fighting it. So I think a recommendation from the board would be helpful.
So, so would you be willing to accept a recommendation for approval of the two lot subdivisions subject to you returning to the zoning board and asking for the variances to maintain the existing building?
I'm going to, somewhat smarter than the answer.
Thank you, good evening.
I know, I get you up here.
Fred Fromholdt, we had spoken last month about this, and I think it's fair to say that the plan that was preferred by our client was what we had originally submitted to the zoning hearing board. And it was only once we assessed where we were going with that plan and opposition and potential appeals and delays and whatnot, that we thought a, a more prudent alternative at that point in time was to go with the by right alternate plan, the one that we had really discussed with you last month. Now we're back to the alternative plan, talking about that tonight. I guess where our client would like to be, would be to have a recommendation from you that would be positive for the. that would be positive for the plan that we have presented, you know, tonight, the two lot, two new buildings. But also a recommendation from you that you would prefer that we move forward perhaps first with the alternative plan to see whether we can get the zoning approval that would be necessary for that alternative plan, which would allow us to keep the existing home. And I think it's fair to say, at least in our view, that most of the variances that we're talking about here are rather de minimis. I mean, keeping the very, keeping the existing home in its place and requiring variances to do that, I think under the circumstances are fairly minor. The one that is perhaps of greater concern would be the variance for the steep slope that is at the rear of the home. But I think Mr. Yon had explained that, that in a sense, we are stabilizing that area with the building itself. And so in that sense, I think, given the fact that these are probably man-made slopes and by virtue of the manner in which we are intruding upon them with the maintenance of the existing home and garage that has been suggested by one of your members here, that that seems like a fair approach to developing this property. So bottom line, to wrap up, would like the recommendation for approval of the plan that has the two new homes. But if we had that recommendation from you, and I think it's also fair to say that the immediate neighbors in the Lawson, on the Lawson Street that had spoken last time, are in favor of keeping the existing home. And there were some others who were more remote that had expressed some concern about the variances that we would be seeking. At least if we go to the zoning board, we think we have a legitimate case that we can present to the zoning board, hopefully with no opposition from the immediate neighbors on Lawson, hopefully a recommendation from you. If we have opposition at that hearing from people who are more remote, that's something that we were hoping to avoid, but if it's not avoidable, I think our client would be willing to absorb that risk and move forward with the zoning application to see if we're successful before the zoning board. If we are not, and it would appear that we would be having to defend protracted appeals, then it might make sense to go with the two new homes and the by right plan, although we would have to assess where we stand and what the likelihood is of any significant delay there. And I think it had been suggested to you before, there's some question as to standing of people who are more remote and so forth. So it could be that even with some opposition here, if we obtain an approval from the zoning board, zoning board could deny our application, but if we were to obtain the approval, it might make sense to go ahead with this alternative plan. So I hope that hasn't been too confusing, and if you have questions on that, I'm happy to answer it. Just so we're clear, the proposed plan is the subdivision, the alternative plan is the maintaining the existing structure.
That's right.
Another point that was made last, at the last hearing, was the support for maintaining the existing structure, the existing structure at the Delaware County level, as was stated in the letter from Delaware County Planning.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The county's planning department's review letter recommended that you save the building, basically.
Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
Which seems to add weight to your request.
Yes, yeah, exactly, exactly. So we would have positive recommendations from two planning commissions, the county and of course yours, that I think would be.
So the intention is that you would zealously and good faith pursue preserving the existing building as your first option?
Yes, yes. Am I correct there, Vince? Yeah. That was my understanding, and my client has just confirmed it.
So a conditional approval, you're okay with a conditional approval? Condition being that you apply?
Yeah, in good faith, we would proceed with an application for the alternative plan before the zoning board.
So what that means to me is that you want to get final approval from the commissioners on the two-lot subdivision unless you've filed an application and appeared before the zoning board?
Mm-hmm.
So just so that you understand, Vince, as I understand it, you would like to have that recommendation, and if that is your recommendation, that before we take this to the commissioners, that we take it to the zoning board.
Correct, yes. Unless you want to ask for a preliminary approval and come back for final.
Well, that would be the preferred approach, that we have a preliminary, that we take it to the commissioners, obtain a preliminary approval that would carry that condition with it, and we would need to satisfy that condition prior to getting final approval. So at least we would have the feedback from the board of commissioners on two things. One, the plan that we're presenting and the alternative plan. It's conceivable they don't like the alternative plan, so it would be nice to know that when going in. Yeah.
I do have one question. If you pursue the keeping the existing building and building on the adjacent lot, what is the extent of the renovations or fixing up the existing building? I mean, as I understand, it's been vacant for a while?
Yeah, and I'd prefer that Vince answer that, but my understanding is that it's going to remain as is. There are no significant external renovations that you have in mind. You're not looking to box it in and make it a stucco building, you know? I mean, you're looking to maintain its basic integrity, architectural integrity? Is that fair to say?
That's a good way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from my colleagues?
Just because the developer's not going to change the existing building doesn't mean the new own, the next owner doesn't change that existing building. I'm actually also looking at the original plan where there's two new buildings, noticing that there's a large tree in the steep slope area that gets to remain. But in this revised plan, we remove the large tree in the sloped area, which means we're substantially disturbing that slope behind the new house.
When you say revise, you mean the alternative?
Yeah, in the, in this plan that we're looking at right now, there is a large tree on the slope that gets removed in this scenario.
I guess it's just a valuation then of what do we, just where are the values here? Do we want to preserve the house as the ultimate goal and lose a tree and disturb steep slopes? Or do we keep a tree, lose the house? I mean, I think based on our conversation last month and based on the fact that the applicant has come to us with an alternative that preserves the home, I think we should seriously consider that as a preferred alternative. And maybe I'm speaking for myself.
Jerry, your view?
I'm sorry, I don't know what's going.
Excuse me, if you have comments, could you address them to the commissioners?
I'm sorry, I was trying to make a comment, and there was some chatter going on. I was just saying that to me, my preference would be to preserve the house. That is the ultimate kind of priority here, if we have the option between that. I don't know that I'm willing to make a conditional recommendation because the alternative plan hasn't been reviewed by our engineer. It hasn't been vetted out. So I don't think I'm comfortable at this time to make a recommendation on a conditional basis to say, I would recommend the proposed subdivision plan conditioned upon you going to the zoning hearing board because, well, maybe I should ask Chuck, is there any, are there anything, are there any remaining items that have not been addressed in the proposed subdivision plan for the two new homes that you would feel uncomfortable about if we were to give conditional preliminary plan approval at this time?
The biggest issue that I think we noted in our review letter was the stormwater management stuff, which was the gutters and downspouts and all that.
Right. So, and that's, see, to me, that's a little bit substantial enough that I would want to make sure that that's going to function properly with the two new homes before I would, before I would feel comfortable making a recommendation to approve that plan. So at this time, I don't know that I'm, that I would be comfortable doing a conditional preliminary plan approval recommendation conditioned upon the zoning hearing board. However, I would, I would be in support of making a recommendation to pursue the zoning hearing board application for the alternative plan. So I know that that's not what you're asking for at this time, but that's kind of where my thought process is.
You're not asking for preliminary final approval, they're just asking for preliminary approval, which means they would have come back here again for final approval.
No, I understand.
And that would give them time to resolve whatever concerns they have. And if they do go through with the, and the zoning board approves the alternate plan, that whole idea of gutters on the side of the house goes away because the seat would be in the back of the line.
That's true, that's true.
I think before we make any motions.
We want to hear from the public.
We want to hear from.
Could we, just to address a couple of the open matters here, very brief.
Thank you. So regarding that tree, it is correct that the tree would stay on the plan with the two new homes, but would be removed on the plan with just the one new home, except it's a seven-inch maple tree, so it's not a large tree.
It's not your picture.
And then I guess the other note is, right now, we submitted for minor subdivision approval. And so my understanding is that's one step. I think when Mr. Capuzzi asked the question about, well, would you take preliminary, I think from my perspective, that sounded like a good middle ground of, we get something that we can rely on from this plan, but not final approval. And it allows you to send the recommendation and give us a condition that makes us have to go to the zoning hearing board.
If you have any other comments, we could hear them, but we do want to hear from the neighbors. I understand. One final comment, and I think it maybe picks up on what you had had in mind here. If it would be important, and I think it is, to know that the alternative plan can be engineered satisfactorily with regard to stormwater management, that if we were to come back to you before asking for this recommendation that we're asking tonight with the review of the alternative plan by the township engineer, and then you would have the full review before you make your recommendation, I think that would make more sense to us. And frankly, from our standpoint, better that we have that review before we go to the zoning board rather than not have that review. So if we had the review from the township engineer, you would be more comfortable in making your recommendation as you were inclined to make it. So, thank you. Okay, thank you. Other comments from the public?
You have to come up, if you want to say something, come up and.
I'm Steve Finley. I'm at 758 Lawson, right next door to Henry Carr's lovely old stone home. Just very briefly, just to thank you very much for, this has been fascinating. I've been in the township for 30 years, and I've never really been part of something quite like this over the last month. It's quite interesting to see democracy and the American way at work in a locality. Just a very quick note, I think I speak for my neighbors and those of us who were here at the last meeting in saying that we really hope, and we're very grateful as well for the team of the developer, that we seem to be, I hope, moving toward the idea that we would keep the existing structure, it would be renovated. And I think that was the primary concern that we had last week, and I just wanted to say again, even selfishly, it's a beautiful old home, that a garage is lovely to look at from my kitchen window, in a very selfish sense. I hope that structure can be saved. Thank you.
Just, I just want to say one thing.
Yes.
You have to remember, if the zoning board turns down their variance requests.
Yes.
They have a legal right to build the two-lot subdivision.
I do understand.
And we can't do anything about this.
I understand that, and that's why, without speaking out of turn, I am still a little quizzed or ruffled that the Farwood Group kind of stole a march on us for some reason and appeared as it did, I guess, last year, and kind of created difficulties for everybody. And I felt last time with the neighbors, when we found out what might be happening, we really did try to come together. And I feel like you're listening to those of us who live, who live there, and I appreciate that very much.
What was the name you said of the other group?
The Farwood Group.
Farwood, yes.
Is there anyone here from Farwood Road? Oh, it's the attorney.
I'm on Farwood.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, have, can you give us any insight on what the issue is with your neighbors?
They don't like what's going to happen on their street.
This isn't their street?
It's the same developer.
Not their street, though? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I take it there's no motion then before the planning commission tonight, and you agree to hold off for now?
We would come back and hopefully get your recommendation if you're next to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the preliminary final land development plan of Haverford Township Free Library. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the library board?
Hello, folks. My name is. Tell I do this a lot. Okay, now you know I'm not technically savvy. All right. My name's Robert Newton. I'm a professional engineer with Carrington Associates. My office and I helped prepare the plan for 1601, Haverford Free Township, Free Public Library. Okay? What is proposed on a half-acre parcel is the extension of the second floor of the building for about 5,000 square feet. The existing floor area is about 11.6 and similar to the first floor. So currently on the property, there is about 23,000 square feet of building area. With this addition, it'll be approximately 28,000 square feet. Also proposed are improvements to the parking lot, driveway entrance, and stormwater system. So this project was before the zoning board, it ultimately had to get a legal court of common pleas agreement between the township and the various individuals involved to allow it to go forward with the various variances that unfortunately this building could not comply with, with the proposal. So what we are going to do is extend the building out over the parking lot and construct that with pillars and columns to make the system accessible. that with pillars and columns to make the system accessible for, for parking, both parking and, and access driveway. I am in receipt of a review letter from, from your engineer concerning this project. And what I'd like to discuss are the various items in his, in, in, in his letter. Most of these will involve the waiver request that, that we asked for, that there are seven or eight of them ultimately, that we will request some type of relief from, from, from you and from the Board of Commissioners. Okay, so let, let me go through these at this juncture. We are going to request a relief, a waiver of regarding property lines and names within 200 feet of, of this development. We have shown the property names and property lines of contiguous properties, but we do not show them 200 feet from the proposed library expansion. Okay, that's, that's waiver request number one. Number two, regarding owners of storm sewer and public water, we do mention on our plan who the owners are. We don't mention who is maintaining those systems. Okay, that's request number two. Waiver request number three is regarding submission of the traffic impact study. A preliminary study evaluation was completed by traffic planning and design for this project. It wasn't a complete detailed study. I will be submitting that as part of the, any resubmissions I have to the township. But like I said, I still need the relief because it wasn't a detailed study. Okay. I need, waiver request number four is regarding open space. The lot is approximately 95% impervious now. It'll be a little more than that after development. So I, there's really no location for any type of open space on, on the lot. Okay. Waiver request number five, regarding land set aside for recreation. And my opinion is that the library itself serves as a alternate function for that purpose. Okay. Waiver request number six, groundwater recharge. We have had the property tested for infiltration. Unfortunately, the rates are very, very low, and the, we, there is a high water table on portions of, of the property. So at least at this point, it's almost inconceivable that we could infiltrate stormwater. But I will add, we, we have been requested by your engineer to do some additional testing, which we, which we are in the process of having conducted.
A couple of questions about the waivers, and more for Chuck. The traffic impact study, the way I read the ordinance, it's required for subdivisions with 10 or more lots and for commercial and industrial uses.
Right. Institutional is not required.
So you don't need a waiver for traffic impacts?
Oh, this makes my life easier.
As far as the open space, open space or areas set aside for recreation only kicks in for land developments that have, that are more than an acre in size. So you fall into that threshold. So that's.
We're about half an acre, plus or minus.
So that doesn't apply to this development?
Okay.
You agree, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay, the next waiver, I think I was at seven and back to five. Okay, the next waiver request would be a required carway width of 27 feet. Currently, the carway width of Mill Road is 23.7. Request number six, shade trees are required to be installed at a minimum distance of 6 feet from the inside edge of sidewalk. With the existing configuration of that building, there is no way that we could possibly meet that requirement. But I will add that we will work with the shade tree commission to work out an alternate location for placement of shade trees or, or meet that, at least meet the intent of that requirement.
I think there might be one more waiver. I think you need a waiver for submitting this plan as a preliminary final subdivision.
Okay.
I don't think there's a, we can call this, Chuck, is there such a thing as a minor land development plan? I don't think so.
I think you're right, Mr. Capuzzi. It's probably better to ask for the waiver preliminary final.
Right. So you're, you're asking for a waiver from the two-step process?
Okay.
That's, all right, we have 160 dash 4A.
Okay. I'll try to remember that. Okay. All right. That was it for my waiver request. There was one other item that your engineer noted in his letter. It's under conformance with stipulations. It's item number two, indicates a 20, 29-foot proposed rear yard setback. Currently, the building is at somewhere around 30 on the north side, 30.2 feet, and 28 feet on, on the, at the right-of-way line. So the average of those two is 29 feet to meet the intent of any stipulations in the court agreements. The final item is under general that I'd like to discuss is number 20, vehicles that can pull in and out of the parking lot. Your engineer asked for us to provide the largest vehicle, which we are in the process of doing, at least confirming what can go in and out of that parking lot. It is my understanding that the largest vehicle that actually enters right now is probably a garbage truck. Those, all the other items within your engineer's letter are, will comply type issues, mostly drafting discrepancies and other items like that. There are a couple of stormwater questions, which I will work out with the, your engineer's staff to, to address those type of issues. That's all I have concerning the project.
Do we have, you want to add anything now? Or do we have?
No, we're just, I'm sorry, Ken Matthews, owner's rep for the library. We're just here to answer any questions or other concerns you may have regarding the review letter, anything else with the proposed.
Are you on the library board?
No, I'm the third-party consultant that was just, you know, awarded the construction manager, owner's rep.
Congratulations.
Project manager overseeing the project on behalf of the library.
I just want to add that it's a great library.
Well, thank you very much.
I spent time there. And I like books. And you have a staff that is professional, courteous, and very helpful, especially when it comes to technical issues where I'm less gifted. So, thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? Yeah, Angelo?
Can you guys answer questions about the stipulation? Okay.
Yes.
The stipulation number four regarding the 10 additional parking spaces. Has any progress been made, been made on that?
You want to speak to that?
I, I believe so. I, I can't speak for the township because they're taking responsibility for adding the.
Can you please come to the microphone?
Tell us your name and title.
My name is Scott Lowe. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees and I guess the chairman of the Building Committee. I can't speak for the township board because, and they are, however, taking the lead role here. And my understanding is that they're making great progress in acquiring the necessary property. And I don't think I can say, I don't know any more than that, but I have understood that they are making progress on acquiring the necessary land to add the appropriate parking spaces.
So the township is responsible for providing these 10 additional spaces? The library has nothing to do with that part of the project?
That's our, yes, sir. That's, that's, we are not taking the lead in procuring the adjacent property.
Okay, thank you.
Quick follow-up question. Do you know if they've identified properties yet, or they're still earlier than that in the process?
Yes, sir. I believe they have identified properties, and I, I think it's common knowledge what.
I don't know. I don't know if it is yet.
May, might not be common knowledge what they're proceeding with. So I. We're not, we're not, we're not moving back into the neighborhood. Let's say it that way. Maybe that would be, so.
It's within 1,000 feet. It's within 1,000 feet.
The library going to be shut down for a period? I assume it is. And is there a plan for an alternative space during that time?
Yes, sir. We have a temporary library space that is currently being renovated in the Manoa Shopping Center. You may have remember, I think they were called.
C N M Sports.
C N M Sports. They've moved down the row in the same shopping center, and their space became available, and we've leased it. It's about 3,000 square feet. And we're going to have, I guess, something like.
15,000, 15,000, right?
Yeah, yeah, about 15,000 books there. People will be able to, you know, get books for, through the Delaware County system. Will, we plan to continue almost all of our normal programs. We may have to use some other facilities in order to do that, churches and things like that. Plus, I believe we're going to use some office space in the old township building. So we should be able to continue operations. It won't be exactly as it is now, but it will be on par for sure. On par for sure.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a few.
I'm not, I had a couple more. Comment number 11 regarding the ADA access to the building. I, I just want to amplify what the township engineer is asking for there. I think you need to do like a one-inch equals five-foot scale just of that area to make sure all the grades work out. Okay?
That, that is usually my intent.
Okay.
I haven't yet, but it will be, it will be done.
And you probably would want to give yourself, you know, rather than go to the exactly one on 12, maybe you design it, try to design it one on 13, just in case, you know, contractor doesn't build it exactly right or something like that. Give yourself a little leeway in that design.
There's the statistics that, that, that the federal government has produced how to design these things so that it allows for contractor tolerances. And that's what I would reference.
And the other, the other item is item 21, specifically regarding pedestrian traffic during construction. I don't know if you can speak to that in more detail before I ask questions, but go ahead.
Yes, for sure. So, yes, the intent, we're going to fence the, around the entire building, but Darby Road sidewalk will not be closed. Only, so basically, you know, the whole corner there, Darby, excuse me, looking up here, this will all be open, the thoroughfare going across over to Senzo's Pizza, et cetera, down the way, that will all remain open. We will have a fence around the building. There is some light-touch masonry work and new windows. So, you know, we'll have to pull out the fence some, but we will not block that off. However, we will block off the entire frontage of Mill Road, and that's some of the comment in here. So some additional signage will need to be added for folks to cross the road down at Greenway. So there's just too much going on, and it's, would be impossible, especially with all the children back and forth. So we feel that's the best for the safety of duration.
All right. So Greenway is, is, there's a stop sign on Greenway, but not on Mill. Okay. So you may have to put up some temporary stop signs at that intersection so kids can cross.
Can do, do a cross there. Okay. Yes.
And you probably want to do some type of crosswalk striping, and you may even consider having a cross guard there. Because you do have the high school students who come down that way, and then they have to get across Darby at the intersection there. So I think you have to pay close attention to that intersection from a pedestrian safety standpoint.
Well, our intent was to meet with some of the township folks to review the site logistics and see, work out any details as you speak of.
And I, I'm assuming you're going to be using the existing parking lot as your staging area?
That's correct. It's very little staging, and that's all being written into the bid specification. So it's basically going to be deliver what you need because there is no real estate.
Are you able to control where the contractors park?
Yes. I mean, we could, absolutely. And the bid specs have some of that. It's going to be a little difficult to fully police, you know, just from a reality standpoint because you do have public parking around there. So we do have to, do have to work through that and make sure we're dealing with that.
I just wanted to note, you had mentioned a couple of waivers that don't show up on the plans, nor are they in your waiver request letter. It sounds like there may be some waivers that are struck because they're not applicable. So just make sure that the updated waiver request letter is submitted, and then those waivers are updated on the plan sheets themselves.
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm in the process of doing that. Obviously, the ones that I just became aware of that I don't need, I'll remove.
Sure. And then I had a couple of questions about the street trees. Are there existing tree pits right now along?
Yes.
Darby? And then there's existing trees along Mill. Are those, so it shows a 10-inch maple, a 6-inch maple. Are those proposed to remain?
So these, these two trees here along Mill Road remain? I believe we only, there's, in the back corner here of the property, there's a large 24-inch, 27-inch pine tree that needs to be removed. So, you know, I forget the calculation. That's where we're going in front of Shade Tree in May 22. So I think it was only one, maybe two trees that needed to be replaced in kind because we were taking out 27. So that was the comment, because the right-of-way line, I think, the actual right-of-way is only 6.9 feet from the building, so it's literally impossible to plant any trees. We are doing shrubs along the, along the side, well, rear yard, excuse me. And one of the comments was that some big, larger trees need to be planted in the rear corner, which will not be a problem. That will get taken care of. We're going to work through that with the Shade Tree, and then we'll have that in our next submission here. So that's why the thought was, whatever additional trees are required could be planted somewhere else in the township.
Okay. So what's currently planted in the tree pits on Darby?
You have two existing maples there. I believe they're maples. Oh, Darby, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Those are off the property. Oh, that's from the new, new streetscape. That was from the new streetscaping the township business. That's right. But we're not, there's no intention for the project to do anything there.
Okay.
All that sidewalk remains.
I'm assuming you're going to be putting up tree protection for all of the trees, particularly those on Mill?
Yes, I believe there's a detail on the plan for that. I'll double check.
I worked 14 hours yesterday, so I have not had a chance to take a look at these. I'm sure it's on there. Um, okay. So that, and then, can you, can you explain a little bit? I, I think this was one of the stipulations I just read, but there's going to be the parking count so that we know how many available parking spaces are in the lot?
So, yes. So there is going to be a parking counter sign. So you can see, so this is the new entrance here. So kind of right to the left of the, as you're pulling in the main entrance, it will be, there's a small brick pier wall, and then on top of it, you'll have a roughly, somewhere. somewhere three by four, four by four electric sign that will say how many spaces are available at any given time. So that sign will be included in the project, yes.
And is that an immediate, as somebody pulls out, the sensor will trigger the count to reflect the available space?
That's correct. It's all, they use it for the system that's going here. It's a camera system that has eyes on all the spaces, so then it, it will be, you know, actual, real time, in and out. So, yes, that's, that's the intent.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for you regarding the building itself. You're taking care of the construction management of the project?
That's correct.
How long are you estimating the project to take?
Construction itself, approximately 15 months, so, but the library will realistically be out of the space between moving out ahead of time, and then, once the construction's done, you have to move back in, et cetera. So you're, just call it up to 18 months would be worst case, but right now, the tentative schedule would be, again, 15 months of construction, and then another, call it month and a half for moving in, putting, getting equipment in, et cetera.
The other question I have is the extent of the addition itself. That's your 5,044 square feet. That's attached to the second floor of the existing library.
That's correct. So if you follow my cursor, it basically comes out from the corner.
I see it.
So that's this whole perimeter around, and then the parking goes underneath that structure.
And the extent of renovation of the existing building? Can you describe what those renovations are?
Yes. It's a, it's a complete gut and renovation.
Okay. That includes elevators, bathrooms, et cetera?
That is correct.
Mechanical room, everything?
Mechanic, well, you know, there's, they just got new boilers, so I mean, we're going to keep them. They were just installed six months ago. But basically, 99.9% of everything goes and gets replaced.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the cost for renovation and the cost for new construction, were you able to break them out?
We certainly, yeah, we have a full cost estimate of, of the building.
Can I ask what the total cost is?
The total cost of the project?
Of the project.
It's a little over $20 million. It was presented at the Township Board of Commissioners meeting. Closer to 21.
And the last question I have, there's an area that's designated behind Vincent Falcone off of Darby Road. There's an area that is not shaded, and it's just white, and it's outlined with a dark line.
That's correct.
What is that space?
So it's just in, the, the, this is, if you look at these two lines here, this is the outside face of the building that Mr. Falcone owns. This is just an open kind of courtyard space.
So to get to that courtyard, you would only have access to it from the driveway of the, the library, and there's like a, maybe a small area that someone can gain access to back there, correct?
No, actually, so the access to that space would be from that, that building, and we're, we're putting in a gate for emergency egress.
Okay.
So that's, there's no, we're, this, there's a fence going underneath the addition around the perimeter of the property, similar to what's there now. And there is an existing gate, so that gate, a, a new gate will be installed as part of the new fence, and again, it will be for egress only.
Okay.
Thank you. No problem.
Is that fence detail is what's shown on sheet seven?
It is, that's not the final version. It's going to be something similar, but it will be a six-foot, either wood or metal, aluminum, and we'll be reviewing that with the two adjacent neighbors to make sure they take no issue with it.
I just wanted to mention, back to the pedestrian issue, as well as collaborating with the township, it's probably a good idea to collaborate with the school district, because there's so many students.
I just wrote a note to do that, yes. We've, we've managed all the school construction for the last 25 years, so, so we'll, we'll talk, get with more Superintendent Dr. Rushee, and we'll, we'll get that worked out for sure.
Yeah, since this is a township building, were any sustainable design elements incorporated into the project?
Sure, I can speak to that. I think generally speaking, the new, most of the new codes, that you're, you're building a sustainable building right off the bat. All the equipment, the boilers are high-efficiency boilers, the mechanical equipment is all the same, so really, all of that is, is very sustainable equipment. It's what, it goes into everything that's done, all the, the windows will have, you know, the reflectivity to reflect the sun, prevent the heat load in, so it will be on the windows. It's all LED lighting, so you have that energy efficiency. The boilers are gas-fired, no longer oil. So there's a number of sustainable designs in there, absolutely, that were incorporated into it. And, excuse me, there, we are currently looking at how many solar panels we could fit on the building as well.
Okay. What is the roof color?
The roof color?
Color?
It's black.
You wouldn't consider doing white?
So we've been asked this many times, and a great roof consultant that we use, a white roof is no good until you get down to Georgia. It doesn't give any benefit for the reflectivity, which was interesting, I did not know that. So the black roof is the same. You have part of the sustainability, speaking of that question, you have very thick insulation on the roof. The new, there is existing roof there, that is to remain, but any of the new roof sections that we're doing are R30 insulation, so it's, it's very heavy duty.
And I'd never heard that about the roof color.
I, yeah, I know. I was very surprised myself.
Because this lot is 95% impervious surface, were you able to come up with any good solutions for rainwater?
Nothing more than what was presented.
I designed an underground storage system that would slowly release the water. We do have some amended soils on the property where we could place them. There's not, I didn't have very many options, but where I did, I placed amended soils to allow porosity to be utilized to store that water.
And then my second question is, I sat in with the historic board, because their liaison there, and I just wondered if you could speak a little bit about the new window well covers encroached into the sidewalk area?
Where, the questions were about matching the existing?
Um, no, I think here it would just sort of be like general construction, because it is sticking.
It is sticking up.
The edge of the building, materials and ability.
Absolutely. So.
And also like the height.
The height of it. So there are four existing window wells around the old bank building. They kind of flank, you know, the corner of Mill and Darby. So in order to get light into the basement, because now they're going, it's going to be usable space down there as part of the project, we're building new window wells as part of the project. So there's basically going to be a one, approximately a one foot tall. Right now, it's called to be out of concrete, and we're working through the exact finishes of it to match the building, but it will be a sturdy material, and it's going to have a piece of structural glass across the top of it, up to the building, so that nothing can fall down. You can stand on it, jump on it, you know, similar to other structural glass around the country, and, you know, viewing platforms. So the intent was that you needed something at least up off the ground for snow removal, et cetera, and it wouldn't be flush with the ground, so that's what was presented.
So if kids would go on top of it, or jump up and down on it, it would be safe?
Yes, it's, it's structural glass. I, you know, I certainly don't have the design load details for you here, but, you know, if I could stand on it, most of the kids should be okay.
Would it be something that's going to be scratched and defaced over time, or you think it will hold up?
Well, we'd have to, have to get an answer from that, from the architect, but I'm sure, you know, it's got to be able to take some abuse, especially being structural, but we can confirm that.
And I was also wondering if you brought an elevation of the building?
I do have one, if you'd like to see it. Rainan, do you mind coming up for a sec, bud? If somebody's holding us in. Thank you. Do you see that all right? So here's the whole bank building looking off Darby Road, so again, really, just putting in new windows and fix, you know, touching up masonry repairs. Let's kind of get oriented. So this is looking on Mill Road. So this is a large new glass entrance, it kind of gets bumped out a little bit. It's in the same location that's there now, new elevator and central stair. So this is kind of the new feature, and there are renderings that were submitted on this and presented to the township in the past. And then you're, we're reskinning most of the building, so it's EPHIS glass. Then here at the corner, you can see, this is the new addition popping out about 20, 20-some feet off of the existing building here. And this is, if you're standing in the parking lot, what's on the rear, it's called the rear side, but it's actually, pull in and you would look to the left. That's this elevation here, which would be glass, some EPHIS and metal panels. Then here you can see underneath, the buildings of the parking will be all underneath there.
Are the, are the metal panels on Mill Road going to stay?
Oh, no, 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 that's, all gets ripped off.
And it's going to be replaced with what material?
It's EPHIS, which is like a.
I know what it is.
Very, you know, EPHIS.
Yes.
Very smooth stucco type material.
And the EPHIS is going to be located above at least 10 feet from grade?
Uh, that overhang is, yeah, it's probably about, about that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think floor to floor here, we're 11 foot and change. Well, it might be 12 foot. 11 foot. 11 foot floor to floor. So the bottom of that is, yeah, about 10, 10 foot six in that range.
Okay, thank you.
Have, have you confirmed that accessible vans will be able to fit underneath the overhang?
That's part of what Bob is confirming, but the height, the bottom height of the overhang, I believe is in not, it's about eight and a half, nine feet. I believe we're about eight and a half to nine feet, but I'll confirm that.
It, it needs at least eight feet to get a van in the handicap parking spaces.
It's definitely more than eight feet.
Can I ask what process the new addition went through aesthetically? I understand and can appreciate the break from the historic building to do something more contemporary. I'm just wondering how this design evolved and was finally selected.
Sure. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So the first version of this renovation was without an addition. And one of the most important things we had to do was make the whole building handicap discussion, ADA requirement. And the solution, because of there's two buildings and some of the structural limits we had, and also needing access from the front, or from the main entrance, it required a new entrance, basically. So that's how we got the butterfly roof and the glass, and that's, that was the original concept. And then, as ideas evolved in the township, the decision was made to make an addition. And the addition is basically takes inspiration from that new entrance. I don't think this obvious drawing does it much, it doesn't really tell you what we're doing so much. There are, there are better renderings that give a better sense of what it's going to be.
Do you mind if I just sit down? This is something that was handed out when you guys presented the historic presentation last month. It's been.
Sure.
Sure. I guess my one comment with the elevation and you describing how it evolved, and this is like a very picky thing, but maybe it could still be adjusted, is that I just wish that some proportional elements have been carried through the new modern design as far as the proportions of the existing architecture, because I think that that existing architecture very much speaks to the character of the neighborhood and some of the residential scale. And it's not so much the design itself, it's more just like the details and how the lines between the materials and stuff, like, are spaced, and like, just tiny adjustments that could be made, and like, the widths of the panes and the.
You're, you're talking about the detailing of this part, or of this part?
Really, the whole thing, just sort of how it, just sort of how the proportions of it are represented. And I feel like that would be a better comment to go directly to the architect, and is less of something that you guys could respond to, but it was just, again, it's not the overall design, it's just kind of like the details and the proportions and some like, I'm just not sure where they are in their design as far as like, fine-tune adjusting.
So I can speak to that. You know, we're at 95% drawings. We're going out to bid next month.
Okay.
So really, that ship has sailed, to be totally frank.
Okay. I was just curious.
Any other questions on the building?
Yeah, real quickly. Given the location of the trash enclosure, I assume trash pickup is going to be after hours?
Yeah, trash, trash pickup is in the mornings, before they open.
Before you open.
So basically, the trash pickup is not going to change at all. Right now, the trash cans are all kind of tucked on this back wall here, and it, now we're just moving them into an enclosure, so regardless of trashmen, trashmen have to physically cart them out, they're standard trash bins, they're not. This isn't a dumpster. That's flying up, so they have eight, 10 trash cans back there, probably?
Six.
Six trash cans.
Township collects the trash?
Township collects the trash.
Okay, and then the construction fence around the project, that's going to be chain link. It's not going to be the plastic stuff.
No, chain link, six-foot fence. I prefer to have driven posts, but with all the hardscape, it's going to be impossible, so.
In addition to pedestrian traffic, there's also vehicle traffic, which you'll, I assume you'll be working with the township on vehicle traffic?
Well, there will be, you know, with, with this work, there will be times that Mill Road has to be partially or fully shut down, just to set all this new steel, glass, et cetera, for the new entrance. You'll have daily deliveries coming into the site, so there will be construction traffic, but no different than, you know, any other typical site.
I would just urge you to be sure and work with the township and the commissioners and the police on getting the word out to the public in advance of what is going to happen.
Sure. Absolutely.
It makes things go easier in the long run, and we've all had issues about communication.
Traffic control is going to be a little funky there, because you're at an intersection, you have a lot of people turning left from Darby Road going down Mill, and you're going to have that one lane blocked off, so you're going to have to make sure you have people positioned in the right places to control that movement.
It's going to be a lot of coordinated effort there, for sure. And it's, you have school hours, the buses, so there's a lot to coordinate with that effort.
Are there any comments from the public? See?
No, so we'll get, you know, all these revisions done here and be back next month, hopefully, for approval.
Thank you.
How's the high school project, John?
It's pretty much all wrapped up. Yeah, all wrapped up, pretty, just a few mi, very minor items have to get final with, you know, county conservation, but that's what we're down to.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You're in, trying to make the next meeting, commission members. We'll be getting a presentation from a representative of the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development on our role and best practices, which we practice now, but we'll learn some, learn more from the Pennsylvania department. So be sure and plan on being here next time, and we'll, oh, the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, thank you. The motion's been made and seconded, is, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion, one abstention.
I have also abstained.
Two abstentions. Any other new business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, we're adjourned. Any opposed to adjourned? We're done. Thank you all.